This is the Dyton Board of Selectmen's regular meeting. The agenda is as follows. Today is Wednesday, the 13th at 6:30 PM. This is a hybrid meeting via Zoom and in person at Old Town Hall, 1110 Somerset Avenue. The Zoom meeting pass ID is 828-0667-4738. The pass code is 191-356. And the phone number to call in is 309-205-3325. Public input may be provided using the following methods. Contact our office at boardofselectmen@dyton-ma.gov to provide input prior to the meeting via Zoom slash call and by phone at 309-205-3325. Continue to play on Dyton Channel 9 and at YouTube at www.youtube.com/townofdyton. This meeting is being recorded. The listing of the matters are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at this meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and with other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. The revised agenda was posted on September 11th at 4:22 PM. So we're going to have a call to order of the Selectmen, please.
Good evening. Leonard Ho is President.
Nicole Mello here.
And Peter Karen Chairman. Can I ask everybody to please stand for the pledge of allegiance? And when the pledge of allegiance is done, can we stay standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge the citizens of the flag of the United States of America into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Since our last meeting, five members of the Dyton community have passed. And we extend our deepest sympathies to Catherine Duncan, Gary McMahon, Helen Midwood, George Thank you.
It's a lot of friends and neighbors to lose this week. First item on the agenda is the proclamation constitutional week. This is a proclamation from the state, whereas September 17th, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as constitutional week. I'm sorry, I thought it was from the Governor. And now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Dyton that the week of September 17th through the 23rd be constitutional week. And urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privileges of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege entitles. And it's signed by the Board of Selectmen. Next on the agenda is an interview candidate for open space committee. Hi Danica, you want to come up?
Please.
This isn't really an interview, so you don't have to be nervous. It's just pretty much appointing you, but ask me just a couple of questions. Are you going to stand behind the podium, please? So why do you want to join?
Well, so I recently moved to town and just interested in getting involved and helping out however I can. And my background is in environmental planning, so seems like a natural fit for open space committee.
Okay. Do my colleagues have any questions?
Actually, I do.
Sure.
Ms. Bellen, have you met with the town administrator? Because one of the important things that I think you should know is what is going on in regards to the position that you are seeking. It's a very important position. And I'm going to ask Mr. Mullin to explain in regards, the big task before you right now is a bylaw upgrade in regards to zoning and building. Mr. Mullin?
Yes, actually, Danica and I met about two weeks ago when Alan and we talked about an update with regards to updating our open space zoning efforts and how that also down the road has an ability to encompass how we plan for housing and other development in town as well. So we had a really good, yeah, we had a really good talk when we met a few weeks ago.
And I believe you're also working with Serpent in regards to the grant, so I don't...
Yeah, yeah, there were a few grants out there that we're working on with Serpent now, and they've been great, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Nicole, do you have any questions?
I don't have a question. I do have a comment. I'm looking over your resume. It's very impressive and very honored that you would want to be on this committee and work with us. Thank you so much. Thank you, I'm happy to.
Did you bring any donuts from Dunkin' Donuts? I hope that was on your list as being a manager.
I missed that. Next time.
Okay, without any questions, your recommendation on the floor?
Absolutely. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to appoint Danica Bellen as a member of the Open Space Committee.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you in convention.
Thank you.
Oh, one other thing. Please make sure to stop into the Clerk's office and to be sworn in, then you are officially a member.
Sounds good, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Danica.
The next thing on the agenda is a recommendation to appoint Senior Clerk, Office of the Town Clerk and Treasurer Collector, Ashley Dagnall. Ashley? Do you want to take, Paul, I think, lead first?
Sure.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight. So we have had an open position in our office for quite some time for the reason that you always hope, which is to have someone be promoted and grow into another position. So during our candidate search, we received 12 applications. HR Coordinator Karen Brady, Town Clerk Sarah Costa, and I reviewed the resumes. And of the 12 that we received, there were four candidates that we felt were standout candidates. So we reached out to all four. Of that, we received word back from two who came in for two rounds of interviews. The interviews were conducted both by myself, Town Clerk Costa, HR Coordinator Brady, but also second round interviews were conducted by the Assistant Treasurer Collector and Town Clerk as well. Of that, Ashley was the standout candidate, did very, very well. She got relevant experience, she seems to have a fantastic grasp of the responsibilities of the position, seems to have a great blend of attitude and acumen. We're very excited at the prospect of having her join our team. And thank you very much for the opportunity to submit this recommendation. I was also asked by Town Clerk Costa, who had other obligations and couldn't be here tonight, to please extend her sentiments that were similar as well. And thank you very much.
Ashley, now you can step up. Sorry about the confusion.
Oh, no, that's all right.
I heard it was quite the interview process, and a lot of people applied, and for it to be boiled down to you is great, and thank you for sticking through it. It shows a lot of your candidacy to be appointed tonight. Do you have any questions, gentlemen and ladies?
No, I don't. There's time.
No, I don't think so.
So is there a motion on the floor to appoint Ashley as the next Senior Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ashley Dagnall as a Senior Clerk in the clerk's office and the treasurer collector's office.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is in. Congratulations. Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Chief, the next thing is for you to open up your meeting, please.
So just make a motion to, accept the motion to open our meeting?
So moved.
Just a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and Fire Station Building Committee.
Right. Thank you.
No problem.
Do you have anything you want to start off with, or you want me to take over for...?
I don't really have anything to add. I've reviewed both applications.
Okay.
I don't really have any questions.
Sure. I know Bob Adams and David Arujo are both here. Welcome, gentlemen. We, right now it's a eight-member, seven-member board, correct?
Eight.
Eight, but only, you're missing one candidate. So there's seven members on the board. Fortunately, I know both of you gentlemen and have a lot of respect for the both of you. We would be put in an awkward position if we had to just appoint one of you. My recommendation at this time is to make it a 10-member board with appointing the both of you. And the reason why is I think you both have a lot to offer, and I would not want to miss out on the chance that we didn't get your expertise on this building committee. So if you don't mind, gentlemen, we would skip the interview process that was going to happen this evening and just go right to making a nomination that both of you be appointed to the building committee. Is that acceptable to the both of you?
Fine with me.
Fine with you?
Fine with Bob, it's fine with me.
Absolutely. Well, Bob's the spokesman here in town. Okay, is there a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, before I make that motion, we're going to need to do two motions.
Right.
And I'll do the first one, and then under discussion, I'll speak more about the two gentlemen. I would like to, since this committee is an advisory committee, they offer advice as we go forward with the architect, person doing the feasibility study, they don't make any official decisions. So having an even number won't be a problem. And with that being said, I would like to make a motion to expand the fire building committee from nine members to 10.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye.
Now, in regards to both Mr. Adams and Mr. Arujo, they have been in this community for many, many years. They have made some really outstanding contributions to this community. So at this time, I would no problem recommend that Robert Adams Senior and David Arujo both be appointed to the fire station building committee.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Thank you, gentlemen. I think, like I said before, you both have immense respect here in town, and you're going to offer a lot to this building committee that they will benefit from. And it would be a very difficult choice to take one of you and not the other, not when you both can contribute so much that we think it's the best option for the town to do this.
Thank you. And as I said to the previous candidate, please check in with the Town Clerk to be sworn in. Thank you.
I'll just have to get out the email addresses for me. Yeah, well, right now, so you're all set?
Yes, sir.
All right. Most of you are in?
Hello? Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
You just need to get on.
Thank you, Chief.
You don't have to stay for the rest of the boring part if you don't want to.
Yes.
Mr. Smith, we're going to move on to the next agenda item, which is Parks and Recreation and an update on the Firecracker Festival.
Sure. We're coming in, ready for what? We're good.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Just give them a second to vacate.
Is there something you said, Kev? Is there something you said?
I can't believe nobody wanted to stay for your update.
All right, so I just wanted to come tonight and quickly just recap. Parks and Rec hosted our third annual Firecracker Festival last weekend, and most of us that are here were in attendance. So thank you all for coming. It continued to be a successful event. I think due to the weather and some of the events happening in surrounding communities, our attendance was a little bit lower than it had been in the past. Everybody had asked me about, you know, what are we going to do if it rains? So I made sure I stopped the rain, but nobody complained that it was going to be too hot. So I didn't do anything about it. My apologies, I'll watch the weather better for next year. It continues to be, I think, an event that the community enjoys. It's a great opportunity for individuals to come out and learn about our committees and commissions. And, you know, even though the attendance was low, I mean, we've seen issues where committees have, you know, quorum issues and things like that. So if a committee can grab one person that could make or break that committee's ability to meet. So I think overall, it continued to be a successful event. It continues to be a learning process for us on Parks and Rec. We're continuously looking to expand it. I've talked to Town Administrator Mullin about, you know, creative ways to increase funding sources for events like that, like through sponsorship rather than through our operating budget. So I think what we're going to do moving forward is really put in a good effort to seek sponsorship for the event, and also to, just regardless if it's in July or if it's in September, whenever we decide that we're going to do it, probably move it closer to the evening, put in a real strong effort so we can actually get fireworks maybe for year four. And then, you know, and I think that will increase attendance. But I just wanted to take a minute and, you know, thank all the committees and commissions that came out, all the other nonprofit groups. We had a bunch of, had a couple churches, some youth organizations, and we also had vendors join us to share, which was nice, so that's all I have on that. I do, if you don't, if you guys have any comments, quick. I did have one other thing that I wanted to just bring up to you in the meeting, and I had a chance to speak to Chairman Karen the other day in the office. What we'd like to do with Parks and Rec moving forward, in my next meeting, we're going to discuss it, and we'll have a vote on it. But what we'd like to do is yearly do a letter or a certificate of recognition for a group, a particular group that goes above and beyond to help the Parks and Rec Commission. I'd like it to be something that we do jointly with the Board of Selectmen so that they can get recognized, you know, here and not just at a picnic table somewhere, because that's how I like to meet. Just so, you know, what I'm going to propose to my two fellow commission members is that we recognize this year the Dyton Pickleball League. It's just been an excellent group of people that anytime they ask for something, it's never, hey, does Parks and Rec have the money or the ability to do X, Y, and Z? It's like, hey, we need new nets. By the way, we fundraised $800 to get new nets. So like, and they're always, you know, even hands-on with keeping the courts clean and anything that they need, it's never a burden on us. So I just want to, I thought it would be a good opportunity for us to recognize them and then, you know, moving in years forward, like with some of the other groups that help us, like the scouting groups and things like that, we can make it a yearly thing where we recognize one group who just goes above and beyond to help us, help them.
Right, I think it's a great idea. The fact that you, I think we talked about this, the fact that you just picking one group a year makes it mean more than just handing them out every week.
Yeah.
Because if everybody gets one, it's not as big of a deal.
Yeah, like I said, we do have, you know, groups of people who help out or some individuals that, you know, consistently do help us, but I just feel like with this one particular group, it's so above and beyond what I would consider to be normal, you know, volunteerism. So it would be nice to recognize them. So I will just, I'll kind of, I'll keep in touch with the office so once we discuss it in our own meeting, and then maybe we can set something up in a future Board of Selectmen meeting.
Sure.
I also don't have the technology to create the certificate, so I got to lean on you guys a little bit. You guys have a little bit better printing capabilities and office help than we do.
Yeah, we chisel them in stone, just so you know.
That's what, yeah, that's what I would expect. Have a monument put up at the courts.
Mr. Ho has a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
As you write your policy, would you consider, I know this year it's a group, but would you also consider in years going forward the possibility of an individual?
Are you saying that because you always have to pick what's on the table?
No, 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 I'm not saying...
Can it be a selectman?
Please, no, no, no.
No, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. I wouldn't, I think this particular case just happens to be a group, but it certainly could be an individual. Like I think, I know in the past, there's been some really spectacular Eagle Scout projects. I mean, even though it's a requirement of them, it's still something, you know, excellent that they do to help, you know, typically.
That man, yes. And there's been a couple other business owners in this community who have stepped up big time.
Correct.
To help out financially, so I would want them to be considered.
Yeah, we'll certainly be, we'll totally keep it open to, you know, any, I wouldn't narrow it down to any particular type of candidate. We'll keep it open, that we just want to recognize, you know, an individual group or organization, we call it.
Now, the second question, it is later on in the agenda under announcements, but with the possibility of the hurricane and the after effects of the hurricane. This week, this Sunday, you have a huge event that you were putting on with the Friends of the Library at the Hazleton Golf Club in Rehoboth. Could you explain what your plans are if the weather is bad, so the public will know?
Yes. Luckily, so far it doesn't look like Sunday, the day of the event, has any inclement weather, so I'm hoping that, you know, barring any catastrophic flooding or, you know, tree damage or the clubhouse blowing away, if the clubhouse blows away, oh man, we're really going to be in trouble. But it is technically rain or shine. Typically with any golf tournament, if there's light rain, the entire event will carry on as it's intended to. If there's significant rainfall or lightning, the golf portion of it will be canceled. And what will happen is the golfers will be given like a rain check so they can go back and play at another date, but the dinner portion of it will still carry on.
Thank you.
So, yeah, like I said, pending any, you know, significant storm damage on Friday or Saturday, we should be able to, you know...
Question for Mr. Mullin. Although we can't use Code Red, if there were to be any changes in this event because it involves Dyton residents?
Yes.
And the Friends of the Library, would it be any other way that we could get word out to the residents in the community?
Yeah, we could definitely use the town's website, like in social media as well, like as long as we don't have to use Code Red, because like it wouldn't be that type of emergency, but we do have other means.
I do have also, so, I mean, we have a good turn, what I would consider a good turnout for the event with both golfers and dinner guests, but it's not such a significant turnout that like it would probably, I also have everyone's phone number and email address that has entered, so I'll be able to contact anybody, you know, if something happens to the point where we need to completely cancel. So I'll make sure that, but it would be helpful for anyone.
Sure.
Who doesn't, you know, check their email, answer the phone, so.
Thank you.
We have the ability to contact hopefully everybody if needed, but fingers crossed that.
It'll be nice, Dick.
Yes. Thank you.
Anything else that you want to add?
I mean, I'll stand up here all night.
I know you will.
No, that is all I have for this evening.
I just want to add on the Firecracker Festival. As you know, I always tell you, this event means so much to me. I'm really grateful for another year of it. I mean, as the, going there as the public health nurse, I don't get a lot of, like, seen in the public, and it was nice to spend the day seeing people and them knowing I'm a real person and I'm really doing nursing stuff, so I enjoy it, I already look forward to next year. So thank you for all your work and the whole Park and Rec's work for that.
Thank you. Actually, I'll just, real quick, I'll add to one other kind of thought in my mind that I'm going to discuss with my, with my commission in our next meeting also is, just to make it a little bit easier on ourselves, because we are such a small commission, is I've even, I want to have the, I want to talk about possibly doing like a Firecracker Festival Committee, so getting a few more hands on deck. I don't think it would be any conflict, so if like if you have the time and the energy and wanted to join us, we'd certainly appreciate it.
Oh, good, now I'm planning the fire.
You know, well, you've always been helpful with bringing in some additional groups too, so I think, you know, just one more point person to be able to, because I'd like to see more of that, where we, you know, channel some other local groups. Like it was great having healing communities join us this year, so it's like, that's kind of the name of the game, is getting more people involved that can bring more people in, so.
Sounds good.
I'll kind of keep you posted on that.
Yeah, thank you.
I think the attendance was great this year. I know the weather was hot and there were not as many people flowing through, but the ones that did enjoyed it. And obviously, the Selectmen had a tent set up, which was our first time, and we had several people stop by just to have an opinion about something or ask a question, and it was very nice to be there.
Yeah, it's nice to have that kind of less formal opportunity. One thing I will add, so there was one gentleman, I was, I took a few minutes on the dunk tank, there was one gentleman who had a really difficult time hitting the plate, and then he falsified some footage and placed it on Facebook, so if anybody sees or hears about that, I mean, just please notify some authorities.
We'll keep that in mind.
Evaluation time.
Yeah, keep that in mind for evaluation. All right, thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The next thing on the agenda is a joint meeting with the Commission on Disabilities. Is anybody here from the Commission now? So there's no meeting to open up on your part.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we want to discuss adding two candidates, and Donald Hershey, how are you?
Yes, sir.
If you want to come up, you can. Donald, you have quite the impressive resume. Thank you for wanting to be here and to do this. The Commission on Disabilities is a little shorthanded and certainly could use a gentleman like you to...
Before this meeting is over, you'll be getting a call, where is the POW flag? I have it.
Okay.
Okay.
We had a free veterans event on Sunday, traps and skeet shooting at the Somerset Gun Club. So I have the American flag and the POW flag, so I'll return that within a couple days.
Disparition, I didn't even know it was missing. Goes to show you how much I pay attention, I guess. My colleagues, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. First of all, Mr. Hershey, thank you for your service to this community and also your country. And as Mr. Karen mentioned, your service to this town is well-known and well-documented. In summing on the disability committee, it is an advisory group, and my question to you is what do you see are the needs of this community in regards to handicap accessibility?
Well, I was a veteran since, for eight years, and I've been a volunteer for the Veterans Department for the next two years, so 10 years I've assisted disabled veterans in the town of Dyton. When this position became available, I thought I could expand my time and also assist disabled people of the general population, not just veterans. As far as specific things that need to be done immediately, I don't have any that I see right now. I know the building commissioner has kept up with all those things, that everything is compliant to the point that the town can do, such as the sidewalks. The American with Disabilities has covered many, many different things, but we in the town, for us, it's accessibility to meetings, accessibility to the buildings, and that type of thing.
Just so you know, there is a report, it's called the KMA report, that has a list of things that need to be upgraded or have been already done to upgrade accessibility and meet ADA requirements. So you'll be working, that'll kind of be your guide.
Mm-hmm, okay.
As you go forward.
Yeah.
That's all I have for questions for Mr. Hershey.
Nicole, do you have anything? Okay, is there a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Donald Hershey to the Commission on Disabilities.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Well, congratulations, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Hershey, as I mentioned to the earlier candidates, please see the Town Clerk to be sworn in.
Very good, sir.
Otherwise, you won't be able to officially vote on any issues that come up at the meeting. Otherwise, you won't be able to officially vote on any issues that come up at the meeting until you do.
Okay.
And thank you again.
I'll do that. Thank you. Good night.
Good night, sir. The next person is Michael Mullen, so we need a, you want to come up, Michael?
Yes. For the Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Michael.
I.
This is my second interview before the Board of Selectmen.
Well, Mr. Mullen.
Yes.
I am well aware that you have a great deal of experience in government at the state, county, and local level. And you served, I believe, in Brockton as administrative assistant. So, you're fully aware of the issues in regards to ADA and ADA compliance. My question to you is, what do you see this commission? What is the role that you see this commission fulfilling in regards to the town of Dyton?
I think we have an opportunity to further, to further define the role of the commission. We have in the last three, four years especially, since the KMA report, like an evaluation was published, we have, I mean, especially with the $150,000 grant that we wrote and received a few years ago, like we, ah, yeah, yeah, like we have made, ah, yeah, we've taken the beginning steps of implementing the recommendations. But I think, I mean, one of the things I see the commission doing, so like it's act, so it's actually having more of a role. And, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like actually identifying, ah, yeah, like a plan and a pathway to achieve all the recommendations. And, yeah, ah, yeah, like, and I do, and I do see the COD as, oh, like, as having a role in that. Like, I also see the COD, like, in having a role in bringing awareness to the different types of disabilities, oh, you know, that, ah, yeah, that we haven't done, and especially, still like also, like, you, oh, yeah, even with our employees from an HR perspective as too, oh, you know, the ADA, oh, yeah, the ADA law in accommodations, you know, like, they also have requirements, we need to be mindful of too, so making sure that everyone in like in Dyton, and they're aware that we're paying attention, eh, oh, yeah, like, and that we have a plan to deal with these issues and deal with them seriously.
Thank you.
Further questions? Nicole, do you have any questions? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to appoint Michael Mullen Jr. as a member of the Commission on Disability.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Karen is an aye.
Thank you. Please make sure you are sworn in by Sarah. Thank you.
The next item is the appointment of Nicole Mellow as a voting member of the Commission on Disabilities.
Mr. Chairman, recent events have resulted prior to this meeting in the Commission of Disability not having a quorum. And in the best interest of this community, the role of that committee is essential. Not only for inclusion and accessibility of everyone in this community, but also to put together an action plan and to review the KMA report so that they can move forward in a positive direction. Because monies are getting tight, so there'll be a need to look at projects that need to be done, reaching out for grant money, and also advocacy with the Capital Alt Lake Committee for those projects that may need town funding. Ms. Mellow has served in many roles, both in the community as the town nurse, but she has also, for many years, worked at Cooperative Productions, working with people with disabilities. And she truly understands what is important to the community in regards to people with disabilities. With that being said, I would like to appoint Nicole Mellow as a voting member of the Commission on Disability.
I'll step down as chairman and second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Congratulations, Nicole.
Thank you.
You don't say that with a lot of enthusiasm.
I know, I, well, I didn't, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I am gonna say, I am very happy to be a voting member again. This, this committee, commission means a lot to me because this is how I got started in the town. I found out about this commission, I got involved, and from there, it just, you know, snowballed into where it is now. Snowballed in a good way. So, I'm very grateful to be back as a voting member.
Great.
So, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna move into announcements. Mrs. Mellow?
The Town of Dyton Food Bank will be held next on September 16th, 2023, located at Town Hall 979 Somerset Ave, the lower level. As discussed earlier, the Friends of Dyton Library will be holding their first annual golf tournament on Sunday, September 17th, at Hazleton Golf Club in Rehoboth, starting at 11:00 a.m. I did check with Kevin Smith earlier, registration is closed at this time, so it did say to call, but. The Dyton Historical Society presents Mill Girls of Lowell Afternoon Tea on Sunday, September 24th, 2023, at the Friendship Hall, 2056 Elm Street. Tea time is at 2:00 p.m. through 4:00 p.m., tickets are $10 each and can be purchased through Dyton Historical Society Facebook page, Rugio Farms, or Dyton Public Library. Lastly, Nurse Nikki's Book Club, the next book club will be, take place on Tuesday, October 3rd, at 7:00 p.m. at Old Town Hall to discuss A Discovery of Witches by Deborah Cornet.
Thank you. Move on to the Town Administrator's Report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My included, like, in the packet, like, an overview of, you know, like of FY25 planning document. And when we think back to the annual town meeting in June, we said, like, and talked about at the annual town meeting, that our FY25 planning would begin really with the approval of the FY24 budget. So, at this point, at the beginning of September, we're approaching FY25, understanding that, that we're definitely going to have challenges, like, especially when it comes to funding educational costs, like, you know, educational capital debt assessments as well going into FY25. Ah, yeah, like, ah, yeah, and as we know, these increased costs, they completely, ah, they impacted already our FY24 fiscal position. And they'll have an even greater impact in FY25 and beyond. I can just, I can, ah, I can, just talking about the BP debt alone, what I mean by that, like, is in FY20, in our FY24 operational budget, for the BP school building project capital debt assessment, we, we already, we have already had to absorb $254,000 a year in that. Like, in FY25, it increases to $650,000. It will again, my debt assessment will again be $650,000 in FY26. And FY27 is projected to increase to $735,000, and FY28 to $850,000. And from FY29 and beyond for, ah, ah, the following 24 years thereafter, it will cap out at almost, ah, oh, it almost half, ah, like, it don't, ah, like, actually, ah, and actually $905,000 a year. So, based on these challenges heading into FY25, we have to absorb an additional four, we have to know, we have to absorb an additional four $100,000, like, in debt service, ah, costs. Ah, can we, ah, can we spend the big part of the summer taking initial steps to forecast out our needs? Ah, like, in FY25, ah, yeah, like, in exactly where that puts us, just based on our FY24 operating cost alone. So, simply put, with the zero-based budgeting process that also informed the FY24 budget, we begin the FY25 planning process with a deficit of $395,000 just by absorbing the FY25 BP school building project, ah, but debt service just based on enrollment. And so, like, also, so, so also, as we know, like, over the last two and a half fiscal years, we've also had to make, we've also had to make significant reductions in our revenue. Ah, you know, over the last, ah, like, in over the last two years of stable revenues, that we have been experiencing at the same, ah, like, at the same time as our typical cost drivers. Those going into FY20, those going into FY25 are projected to add about another $240,000 to that, to, to the $395,000 deficit as well. So, so, so obviously, as I mentioned, planning, planning for the BP debt is the biggest issue here. But especially when we're dealing with, like, when we don't have a whole ton of discretionary budget centers as a town. And so, here, ah, ah, we have, like, our FY20, FY24 operating budget is $25.8 million. Ah, but then, af- after we back out, like, after, like, after, like, after, like, after we back out the cost that we as a, ah, that we as a town don't really have discretion over, like, we have to basically absorb that for $100,000, like, through like an 8.6, through an 8.6 million dollar budget. Which, ah, yeah, like, ah, yeah, we're trying to spread, ah, yeah, like, $400,000 just in FY25 alone, over 8.6 million dollars. Ah, yeah, like, I mean, the prompts, I mean, and, yeah, like, it will prompt very, oh, yeah, like, very impactful, oh, yeah, challenges. Just based on our FY24 budget position, that, ah, you know, just based on that example alone, that, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, all things being equal, that has, that has a potential to, ah, to, I mean, $190,000 in cuts to public safety, to, to about 30, to about $40,000 in trash and sanitation, to $81,000 in, like, our general government. Obviously, these are an ideal. Oh, yeah, like, I mean, and obviously, the scenario that we've identified is a worse, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, is really what I view as a worst impact possible. But, you know, the planning for FY25, as we mentioned, has begun. Ah, you know, like, I've, ah, like, I've, like, I've already in the last few weeks, I, in the last few weeks, I've reached out to, like, in the last few weeks, I've reached out to DR school officials as well. So, so we can, so we can have an honest discussion about, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, our availability to, to fund, oh, yeah, these and other issues, ah, you know, in the next fiscal year as well. And, I mean, I am happy that, ah, that, ah, that we're beginning now. But, yeah, like, we definitely have like a ton of work to do between now and next year. Ah, yeah, like, and I'm hopeful and I'm up, oh, yeah, like, I'm optimistic we'll be able to get there and do this, ah, you know, in a way that we really spread out the impact to, um, to, ah, yeah, to hope, ah, ah, to hope, ah, to hope we not have a significant impact. But it, ah, but it, ah, but is it, but is it gonna be very difficult to do at this point?
How'd the conversation go with Superintendent?
We, ah, like, actually, like, I have been, like, I have been, like, I've been emailing back and forth with him, with Chairman Morse, and, ah, like, ah, like, here with Vice Chair Andrew. Ah, and, ah, yeah, like, ah, yeah, like, we're, ah, like, we're in the process of, ah, yeah, like, trying to, ah, like, trying to set up like a joint, ah, yeah, like, a joint panel between, ah, ah, the BOS and their Budget Subcommittee, so we can talk about, oh, yeah, like, all these issues in greater detail. So, hopefully, we'll have the opportunity to do that in the next three to four weeks or so.
Mr. Hall, I know you have questions.
Yes. Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
The scenario that you presented to us this evening, who was involved in establishing the needed cuts based on a percentage of the budget?
Ah, that, ah, that is, ah, those, those, those cuts are just based on the FY24 final budget. So, based on those, based on, based on our current FY20, based on our current FY24 expenses and our expense, oh, yeah, like, in our expenditure, in our spend structure as a percentage of budget, like, when, ah, 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 once we back out the issues, ah, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, in the funding that we don't have it, ah, that we don't have any type of discretion over, that's how, yeah, like, we got to the bottom line, how, ah, yeah, ah, how we could have an ability to make up that $395,000. So, that's just based on the FY24 budget as it is approved right now.
Now, the public looks at these numbers.
Yep.
It appears, looking at that, that public safety would take a heavy hit.
That's how it would view, yes.
And.
Based on that.
To reassure the public that this is a work in progress, if I'm correct.
Oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, absolutely. One of the things, I mean, like, we just talked about how we were reaching out to DR. Ah, yeah, we don't have any control as a town over the DR budget. So, ah, yeah, ah, ah, but, yeah, like, if we tried to include a figure, like, any type of cut in there, that would probably ignite World War V, to be honest with you. So, we didn't have, we didn't have, ah, yeah, like, we didn't have any cut in there, but in doing that, we left 54% of our current operating budget alone. So, obvi- so, obviously, trying to absorb that, that 300 and, ah, that $395,000, that basically cuts by more than, ah, by more than half our ability to, ah, yeah, to spread that $400,000 out.
In regards to the schools, K through 8 is still under the domain of the Town of Dyton. And what I'm saying is based on the same discussions that are going on in the Town of Rehoboth right now. And the question that I've asked, and I will ask publicly this evening, what is the minimum net school spending that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts requires us to meet in K through 8 in the Town of Dyton? I am not insinuating that that is my goal to do that, but I want to know where the bottom line is. Because you just mentioned World War V. Well, what I don't want to get into is a war between public safety. Well, what I don't want to get into is a war between public safety...
Oh.
...and the school, or seniors and children.
So, yeah, like, and I just want to quickly clarify that. What I meant is, oh, yeah, like if I included a hypothetical figure without any consultation with, oh, yeah, like with DR as like a separate entity, that to try, oh, yeah, to try to do that or anticipate that without involving them at this point, oh, yeah, like that just, uh, that just wouldn't be good form of good practice.
No, no, I, I get that and I understand that, but I'd like to know...
Mm-hmm.
...what wiggle room we have in regards to the schools.
I don't disagree at all.
Looking at that number of a hundred and ninety thousand...
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it's scary.
Oh, it, all of this is because our budget is already even in FY twenty four based on what we do now. Uh, yeah, we don't have any room whatsoever.
As I said with the BP project, there are wants and there are needs, and we'll need to do some soul searching...
Mm-hmm.
...of those, what are our wants and what are those things we need, absolutely need.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Nicole? No questions, okay. Okay. Great. Well, thank you. Uh, the next item is the Selectmen's Reports, and I'm going to do the Historical Commission. I just want to finish pulling my notes up, if you'd just give me, uh, twenty seconds.
No problem.
We met last night and, uh, and here, and, uh, the group did not have a quorum, so there was nothing voted on and, uh, nothing, no, really no decisions were made. The, um, biggest thing that to come out of it was the budget that they're at, not the biggest thing. One of the things that they came out with was the, uh, their two thousand twenty-four budget, which they are, uh, right in line with where they should be. There's, there's no issues for how they plan their spending for the rest of the year and where they're going to be at. So they won't be a negative or a positive to, with their, uh, with their budget. They, um, one of the things that, again, that we had talked about was the fiftieth Time Ca- fifty-year Time Castle, which, um, I told them I would be around to open four of them. And, um, they're still looking for items to put inside, items or suggestions. And one of the nice things to come out of the Firecracker Festival was the Girl Scouts had come with books and photos and things that they've accomplished, uh, to put inside the, uh, the Time Castle. And they're still looking for items or suggestions from the public. So if anybody wants to get involved, uh, they could always call the Historical Committee. They, um, we saw it interesting, oh, the other thing they're doing is discussing the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. And we had brought that up, uh, a few weeks ago or about a month ago, uh, looking for volunteers. Uh, I think they, they, um, would like the Board of Selectmen to be in on everything, and if we want to certainly volunteer, uh, one of us or all of us to be part of that. One of the other things that came up that was the most impressive was one of the, uh, the members did a map update of, uh, historical markers in, in town. Everything from the old houses to where cemeteries are, uh, to, um, neighborhoods that are considered, um, historic. And, uh, he made a presentation with several maps on top of each other so that you could click on one item and have all the old houses come up. Uh, and you can click on another item and have something else come up, uh, which we all thought that it was a great idea, but also the town could possibly use that as a, uh, as a tool. And, um, that was it, pretty much. We had a next meeting planned, and that wraps up about everything up that we discussed.
Have they selected a spot for their Time Castle?
Library.
Inside or outside?
Inside.
Inside?
Yep. They, uh, they want to keep it in the vault, uh, until the library is finished and, uh, and then place it over at the library.
Where inside the library?
They don't know because they haven't met with the, uh, trustees yet where, where there's a spot for it. But it would be in a plexiglass case with the box, uh, inside with covering everything.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Nicole, you want?
Um, so I was not able to attend the Trails Committee meeting, so I don't have anything to report on that, but, um, it is not on here, but I just wanted to report real quick in regards to the, um, the Board of Health, the Health Department, um, the new Health Agent Heather has started. Um, she's been being, um, on-boarded by Jim and Elizabeth, and, um, I got to spend some time with her at the Firecracker Festival, and she, it's like she's just always been part of the team. She's, she's great. Um, so I'm really happy to say that I feel like the department's at a really great place, and I'm, I'm really proud of all the work they've done. So, thank you.
Thank you for the support. They, uh, they've made a great headway within the last, uh, five months, four months, and, uh, that's a, uh, uh, thank you to everybody who's been involved. The, um, we met her as well on Thursday, I mean, on Saturday, and she was very nice, but that was the first time I had a chance to meet her. And, uh, she had just done inspections and I think was a little intimidated, but, uh, she did well.
I told her she's got to wear a thermometer on her belt.
I told her not to.
Yeah, I know.
Uh, Mr. Ho, I think you're up.
Yes, thank you. Um, the DDIC, uh, has their business expo scheduled for October third at the Bristol Agricultural School. Um, it will begin at five P.M. Any businesses that are interested in participating, they should con, uh, email, um, the chairman, Dan Higgins, at ddic@dyton-ma.gov. And it will be open to the public, however, I believe there is an admission fee of ten dollars.
And what's the date on that?
October third. This will be the second annual. It was well-received last year, and Berkeley will also be participating in it as well. Um, also with the DDIC, uh, we are inviting area bus- Dyton businesses, if they would like to participate in the Spotlight Program, which is an interview, uh, on a cable network. They should also contact the DDIC at the email ddic@dyton-ma.gov. Um, there'll be an interview, it'll be on, uh, recorded, so that people can learn about what your business does. And I'd also like to ask if the DDIC could at some point come forward and, and explain, um, some of those businesses, especially the newer businesses that have come into the town, and give them a boost. Um, one of the things that's very important, not only for the financial stability of this community, but also in helping clubs and organization, are the contributions of businesses. We've seen that with a couple who have done, made tremendous contributions to this community over the years. But we have some new businesses coming in. Um, one of the most recent is One Connection, and their money that they have given to the town, first year twenty-five thousand, this past year thirty-five thousand. So the businesses are very important to this community, and their success influences and affects our success. So please reach out. Um, our town treasurer is the one who handles the Spotlight, and Mr. Reynolds, who is here this evening, um, would be glad to spotlight your business. Just by reaching out, we'll give you airtime, and also if you would like to come on our agenda to speak about that business.
I, I will be honored, absolutely. Thank you very much for the recognition and the opportunity to, uh, share the mission of that.
You're welcome. Um, regarding the school committee, there are two aspects this evening, one I will be speaking on, and the second one, Mr. Mullin will be reporting on. Yesterday, we had a very, very important meeting with the Massachusetts School Building Assistance Board. They did a tour of Dyton Elementary School, and things are moving very quickly. In the last two months, we have gone from sixty-four in the top sixty-four to the top thirty-two, now we're down to the top sixteen. And I believe October thirteenth, the MSBA is going to meet, come up with an additional list. So with that being said, I will turn it over to Mr. Mullin.
Uh, yes, and no, thank you, uh, um, thank, uh, thank you, Selectman Ho. Uh, yes, so, so we did, yesterday afternoon, we met with Superintendent, uh, we met with Superintendent Rooney and his team, um, as well as a, as well as, as well as a senior team and architects, uh, from, um, from the MSBA. Um, they, uh, uh, the statement, uh, the statement of interest that was submitted by the school district, uh, like, um, I believe at the end of May, they wanted to follow up on that and really see, uh, yeah, like firsthand what the issues were and what the issues that were identifying the SOI actually meant. And, um, it, I mean, uh, yeah, like I do, I, I do think that DES has a very, um, ha- um, has a very compelling case to get assistance. Uh, like we don't have any idea yet if it does, uh, like if that actually does become possible, what, uh, uh, yeah, what type of assistance that actually could mean. Uh, does it, uh, uh, do we have an ability to, like, address, like, can we have existing portions of the school? Um, do we have, do we, do we have any opportunities to do any type of addition work? Uh, like, well, oh, yeah, like will the MSBA recommend a whole new building? Those are all issues. Those are all aspects that the MSBA, if we are invited in, to a feasibility study process, those, uh, those are the issues that the MSBA is going to look at, uh, like actually with us and with the school district as well. Like, I think the three, uh, 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 the three takeaway issues that really came out of the meeting, uh, uh, that I think the MSBA took out of the meeting was, um, we have, uh, like we have, as we know, extremely growing issues with enrollment that, uh, that, uh, that, uh, that even, uh, that even the modules that we have, uh, like Ian have had for the last five years, they don't even have an ability to keep up, uh, 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 with where our enrollment's going. Uh, yeah, like, uh, yeah, like where our enrollment is even with this, uh, school year as well. Uh, like we've had a tremendous increase, uh, uh, well, like in enrollment just from June to September of this year alone. Um, the other, the other, uh, the other issue on, uh, uh, the other issue to that point as well, like is our special education needs are also extremely significant. Uh, like in we, based on the building, the core building being, uh, uh, yeah, like a nineteen fifty-three building, the school district does, uh, they have, oh, yeah, like a very, very, oh, yeah, very, uh, yeah, like very small and limited ability to actually address special, uh, uh, well, yeah, issues and needs, uh, you know, based in accordance of what the IEPs are calling for. Um, they, that is, oh, that is just a huge takeaway that I noticed, uh, like and I think that the MSBA, uh, 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 like had noticed as well. Um, uh, uh, yeah, uh, uh, like in the third issue is our accessibility needs. There are accessibility needs or lack, uh, like, uh, uh, like accessibility, like in many, many areas of that school. And, um, and so, and, uh, and, uh, yeah, like again, that was just, uh, yeah, oh, yeah, uh, but yeah, like a takeaway that I think we all came out of there with. So, 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 yeah, so when you talk about our accessibility needs, uh, the, uh, 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 but the, uh, the enrollment issues and trends and, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, uh, uh, and the fact that as a result of that, we don't, uh, like have any areas to, to deal, uh, 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 to deal with and help us students with special education needs. Uh, yeah, like I do think and I hope the MSBA is going to pay attention to that, but act, uh, uh, but actually how they do that and what that means was still very early on in the process. So, yeah.
Does the MSBA have, um, any, uh, do they give any funds to renovations, or is it strictly new schools?
They do, uh, they do, uh, yes, they do do that. It's based on, uh, uh, they do do that based on what the feasibility study recommends. Uh, like act, uh, like act, uh, uh, like actually my hometown high school, they rec- uh, yeah, like in my hometown high school, they recommended a renovated high school as, so, 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 yeah, in comparison to a brand-new one.
Okay.
So, yeah, they do have a ten, they do have an ability to do that.
Oh, ability to do that?
Yes.
So if, if it was chosen to go that route...
Yep.
...there is money from the state?
Yes, yes.
Great.
And further speaking about that, the point we're at is not really a surprise. In nineteen ninety-four, long before solar was even thought of, or the projects that we see today and the mandates that we see today, long before green schools, um, green facilities, long before Arbor Crest was even thought of, or Strawberry Fields was thought of, the Master Plan Committee, which I was a member of as a member of the school committee, put together projections over a twenty-year period. And they said that by two thousand fourteen, the Town of Dyton should begin looking at a new s- school. And they went the route of the addition in two thousand nineteen. That addition was the, a Band-Aid. They added six classrooms. There was no major upgrade to electrical, certainly no consideration for solar or energy efficiency. The Master Plan Committee went on to further state that by two thousand twenty-four, this community, because of the need for energy upgrades, because of the deterioration, aging of a building that was built in nineteen fifty-three, that this community would be looking at the need for a new building, a new school. So that's the problems that we face today. What complicates it is because of the difficult economic times, as we saw earlier this evening. MSBA did say that we're not talking about a new school anytime soon. Five to seven years is usually how the process goes, um, between feasibility studies and the like. So we've got some work to do. And on the issue of whether it's remodel or a new school, let us not forget some of the lessons that we learned with the Bristol Plintham Project as well, about the comparison between remodeling and a new school. Because remodeling may not take care of all the issues that present itself to us. In addition, remodeling will take care of our needs short-term, but as this community continues to grow, are we down the road going to be looking at putting another addition on an old building? So those are things we have to think about as we go forward. Um, two other things on the school department. Two other things on the school department. When Bob Baxter submitted his resignation, that was a huge blow to the district. Those of you who don't know Mr. Baxter, he's the business administrator for the school district, probably the best that district has seen since the nineteen nineties. The committee last night voted to appoint a firm, TMS, to handle Mr. Baxter's role, because Mr. Baxter has done September thirtieth. So they are going to do a major search with the assistance of NASDAQ and the Massachusetts School Committee Association, to see if they can acquire a good candidate at a price that they can afford, and that becomes an issue. In the interim, TMS will handle the services of the, of the budget administrator. And one of their representatives will be working with us as we go through the budget process. The other item, as we've seen in the town of Dyton, with the addition of Mrs. Brady as I, Human Resource Officer, the Dyton Rehoboth Regional School District hasn't had one in a full capacity. And with the growing needs and legalities of human relations in any business today, they have found it necessary to post the position. And the posting would out today. So they are looking for a Human Resource Person, Officer, if you will, to oversee Human Resource issues. That is it for the school committee. Water District, first main street. For those who are hitting the speed bump at Culver, one, the Water District has promised us that they will smooth that out and cover that. Two, for those who have a problem with Verizon leaving holes in their front lawn as they removed the telephone poles, if you have a problem, please contact the Board of Selectmen's Office, not the Water District. I learned earlier this week, a number of neighbors had complained. I called the Water District, and I was told, no, that is a Highway Department issue. So I contacted Mr. Ferry's office. And his response, on a rainy day, was absolutely incredible. As I was pulling into my yard, there was a truck coming right behind me. And I went out to them, and I said, I just called ten minutes ago, and it's raining. I just mean it had to be done immediately. And his guys went out and filled in the holes up to the point that Verizon was at with the poles. Those were dangerous holes. They weren't six inches deep. They were two feet deep. My concern is somebody jogging by, especially early morning or the evening, they step in that hole, they're going to get badly hurt. So, Mr. Mullin?
Mm-hmm.
Please extend our sincere thanks and appreciation to the Highway Department. Once again, Mr. Ferry and his people, they come through big time. On September twenty-fifth, at the Dyton Middle School, I believe it will be six p.m., there is going to be a special meeting of the Water District to vote four hundred and thirty, four hundred and forty thousand dollars to refurbish the Cedar Street well. That is very, very important for us to maintain the level of water service to the Dyton Water District at this time. And with that being said, negotiations for the Somerset Well are still ongoing. There is a major stumbling block at this time. And that is over the level of PFAS. Currently, the PFAS level, as established by EPA, is twenty. The EPA is recommending a level four. A level four will result in major upgrades to filtration systems throughout the Commonwealth. So with that being said, it may create a situation where the purchase of that well may be cost prohibitive for the town of Dyton. You buy the water for six million dollars, and now you have to spend another two to three million to upgrade your filtration system. The Water District only has so much money. And the people in the Water District can only tolerate paying so much in fees. So those negotiations are pending, further direction from the EPA. With that being said, last week, I attended a forum with Congressman Jake Oshinklash. And he is very much concerned about PFAS impact on his district. And he also serves as the chairman at the national level on infrastructure, which is a huge committee. And the town of Dyton benefited tremendously from his efforts and his leadership with the two-point-seven-five million dollars that we received for the Cogbrook Pleasant Street Bridge. He is working towards creating a funding system for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to deal with the impact that it will have. And, you know, it would cost us millions. The commission said around two million. Bonsable County is looking at a billion dollars. So this is a tremendous impact to all the communities. Sometime in December or January, Congressman Oshinklash is going to hold a forum in which community leaders in his district will come together and express their concerns, their needs, and that will be really important, because obviously, when he negotiates with Congress, he's going to need to know what he actually needs. The one point that he did say, that it will probably be a grant program, so communities will have to apply, and it will be managed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So the grant money will come down to the state, and then the state will allocate it based on a selection process that they will establish. Thank you.
Very informative. Thank you. Next on the agenda is any old business?
If you don't have any, Mr. Chairman?
Then we're going to move right on to new business. A is proposed budget draft, bylaw draft.
Yes, I'll take that, just, just really quickly. As, like, as the board and the public knows, the Department of Revenue, they did a financial management review that they finished for the town, like, in April of two thousand twenty-two. And, and, oh, like, one of the recommendations was that the Department of Revenue had that we start to codify, with the, the financial processes that the town has. So, so our processes don't depend on whoever, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, any incumbent who happens to just hold the position, and then if that, oh, oh, yeah, like, oh, like, if that role position evolves, that we have the same really guiding principles and policies. So one of the things to start, yeah, like, and continue the process to implement the recommendations, they do, they do, the Department of Revenue, they recommend, like, us actually crafting and developing a proposed budget bylaw to present to, to present to town meeting. So one of the things that we also, like, over, over the last, over the last, over the last, over the last three months, we've had the opportunity to work with Abby Eckerson, yeah, like, from, yeah, like, from Dyton, who's been a DOR fellow in our office. And, oh, yeah, but, while, while, like, working with her, we came up with a draft of, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, of a potential proposed bylaw that would fit. And, and, yeah, like, and illustrate the process that, the budget process that, oh, yeah, we have now, and we have actually improved upon and built upon in the last three years as well. So, so, like, if there are any, like, questions or feedback, we are hoping to be able to propose it as a bylaw, like, at our upcoming special time meeting, to, 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 like, any feedback or input the board, either has in order to perfect it or make it better or anything, where?
Sure.
Open ears in, in terms of any thoughts.
Do you have any questions?
Not a question, but just edification for the public. This is a draft.
Yes. Yep.
The process will be reviewed. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mullin, we will be holding a forum to review the bylaws. I mean, the-
Warrant articles?
Warrant articles. And the public will be able to have input on this draft before we finalize and close the, not close the warrant, but place the items, the articles on the warrant.
Yes, sir.
So this is not a done deal at this point in time. Mr. Mullin, if the public wishes to review this budget bylaw, will it be online? And if so, what would be the reference point so they could check it out?
Yep, so, the, the draft, the draft budget bylaw, like, it's already in the packet for, like, it's already in the packet for this evening's meeting. But I can also, but I can also add it to the homepage of the website under a news item. So, yeah, like, it, oh, yeah, like, it's easily accessible, and it can be one or two clicks for folks at home. Oh, yeah, we can absolutely do that.
Cole, do you have any concerns?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the proposed budget bylaw draft as presented this evening.
Okay.
One second, Beth.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ben Peter-Carron is an aye. B is facilities request for the Prince Henry Society Car Show?
This is, this is, this is an annual event. We do have all the appropriate sign-offs from our departments, like, in, like, in the application form. They, they, however, they haven't indicated whether or not they're asking the fee to be waived. That is the only thing that is unchecked, Mr. Chairman.
The Board of Health hasn't signed off yet.
They, they said food, oh. Health Director Agia.
Yes, I see the document.
You commented on it, but you didn't sign it. Thank you, Nikki.
I have some information also to share in regards to.
Okay, I'll, I'll listen.
Okay, you want me to go first?
Yeah.
Mrs. Katia Beer called me to explain that it will be necessary for one of its members to be served safe, proof, is that correct?
That is correct.
And with that being said, one of the members is in the process-
Okay.
-of being served safe, certified.
Okay.
And she asked if I made the motion to stay, the motion that's subject to, to conditions. One, approval of the permit, and that a serve-safe certificate will be included in that process.
Okay.
So there'd be no surprises to the Board of Selectmen, or that committee, or to Mr. Agia.
Sure. Now you know why I asked you to go first, because that's why I didn't sign it. So if you want to make the approval subject to obtaining a food permit from the Health Department, that would be great. If they don't meet the criterion that's required, then they won't be able to serve food.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, and I apologize. Like, I saw Jim's fancy handwriting, and I just assumed, yeah.
I was going to, before we voted. Gladly make that motion.
To approve based on-
Yes.
The Board of Health signing off?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Prince Henry Society Car Show for September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, at the Cow Sprat Athletic Field, on condition of approval by the Board of Health in regards to a food permit.
One second, Beth.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Carron is an aye. Thank you, man. Dyton Rehoboth Volleyball Car Wash?
We do actually have all the sign-offs on this.
Right, except for the Board of Selectmen, right?
For the use of the town garage.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Dyton Rehoboth Volleyball Car Wash request scheduled for Saturday, September twenty-third. It'll be located at Dyton, at the Dyton Town Garage.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Carron is an aye. Thank you. Agreement between Town of Dyton and Town of Berkeley, access to the Town of Dyton Gun Range.
Yes, on this, this, this proposed agreement has been, has been in the works between the Town of, between the Town of Dyton and RPD, the Town of Berkeley, like, and their PD for the last three, for the last three to four years now. It's actually the agreement that our existing agreement with the City of Taunton is based off of as well. It's, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, oh, it's the exact same language. Like, in act, like, in actually the process to get here with the Town of Berkeley began, from what I understand, actually with Berkeley before it went to Taunton. And what this agreement, what this agreement would entail, it would, like, it would allow the Berkeley PD offices to, to use the gun range only when our offices are there. So, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, it wouldn't have any increase in the days that, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, that our gun range is being used, the Berkeley offices, oh, yeah, like, would only, I, oh, yeah, like, would, oh, yeah, would only be using the range only when the Dyton PD is there and active there as well. Oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, and one of the things that the Berkeley PD has pledged to do, like, is they have pledged, they, they, they have pledged as part of, like, a mutual aid here, they have, they have pledged to purchase, oh, yeah, like, additional ammunition for Dyton's use at the range, so, yeah, like, and also other operational expenses that we have as well.
Your motion on the floor?
Um, I want to make a motion. There are two, there are two parts to this.
Yep.
One, the relationship between Berkeley and Dyton in regards to police is longstanding, which are providing mutual aid or mutual assistance when offices are tied up with other causes. So from that point of view- So, from that point of view, I am totally in favor of it. I do have a concern, and it's a concern that some of the neighbors up at the gun range have expressed, is that we are increasing the usage of the range. And as a result, the number of days that there's gunfire in the neighborhood, and that has bothered some people, and has bothered dogs. What restrictions or provisions are going to be in place with the addition of Berkeley to the range? Where they could make it more joint?
Yes.
Taunton, Berkeley, and Dyton?
The, um, so the only time Berkeley P D would be able to use the range based on this and based, uh, oh, yeah, like, uh, based also on a condition that Chief Nichols, uh, like, has, has already placed on Berkeley, is Berkeley would be only able to, uh, uh, Berkeley would only be able to train at the range only, uh, like, on the days that the Dyton P D is already there and using the range. And to, to, so, yeah, like, if it's a day that our personnel aren't there, uh, that, uh, uh, for the Town of Berkeley doesn't, uh, like, have any ability to use, uh, the range without us there, so there won't be any, uh, increase in days over and above, uh, you know, how, how the range is being used now.
Okay, no, thank you very much.
Nicole, do you have any questions, concerns? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement between the Town of Dyton and the Town of Berkeley for access to the To- Town of Dyton Gun Range.
One second, Beth.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Carron is an aye. Fiscal year 2024 hire increase. I would like to postpone that until the 27th. Yeah, the 27th, and, um, to discuss the matter at that time. It's, I'd rather have the time to read it and, and digest it more than to, uh, vote it in tonight.
Okay, um, since it's been mentioned in the public, uh, has there been any discussions with the unions about this?
No.
The, the hiring freeze wouldn't affect any current employment obligations that we have now with current employees.
Are there any contractual minimum?
Uh, there were not in any of our C B As, no.
So is there a motion on the floor to postpone this until the?
I would like to make a motion to table discussion of the fiscal year 2024 hiring freeze to the next meeting of the Dyton Board of Selectmen.
One second, Beth.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Carron is an aye. Uh, we're moving right on to approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the Town of Dyton to pay the warrants of August 31st, 2023. Article 10A dash 24 for the sum of $140,315.27. Article 10B dash 24 for the total of $546,163.01.
One second, Beth.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Carron is an aye.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to pay the warrant of September 7th, 2023. Article 11A dash 24, $114,879. Article 11B dash 24 for the sum of $72,463.77.
One second, Beth.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Carron is an aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Town of Dyton pay the warrant of September 14th, 2023. Article 12A dash 24, $118,421.99. Article 12B dash 24, $52,112.35.
One second, Beth.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Carron is an aye. Correspondence, email from Jen to Zosowski, resigning from the Dyton Commission on Disability. I received a letter from her, I mean, from Jonathan Gale on August 28th, effective immediately, I'm resigning my position as Town of Dyton Commission on Disabilities. Motion to accept?
Mr. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Jennifer Dutchkowski from the Commission on Disability.
One second, Beth.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Carron is an aye. Moving on to minutes, approval of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of June 20th, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular scheduled meeting of the Dyton Board of Selectmen minutes of Tuesday, June 20th, 2023.
One second, Beth.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Carron is an aye. Uh, approval of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of August 23rd, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes of Wednesday, August 23rd, 2023.
One second, Beth.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Carron is an aye, thank you. Uh, public input, does anybody have any concerns? Yes, sir.
Kevin Smith, 1147 Senate Street. I'm gonna try to kind of work in reverse of how the meeting went. Um, one thing to keep in mind, um, I think it's great that we're, the Police Department is willing to share our range with neighbor and facilities, um, but as we're talking about the impact, not just on the community, I, I live on Senate Street, I hear gunshots that are not from the Police Department at all times, at fun times, so it's something we have to deal with. Um, but, uh, just keep in mind, moving forward, as far as costs go, is that there is at some point gonna be an environmental impact and you're gonna have to have lead remediation.
They, sorry, I meant to interrupt.
So, just kind of keep that in mind as part of that, you know, their obligation to us is that at some point we're gonna have to clean it up and have soil samples and water samples, because that does abut wetlands.
Oh, yes, uh, can I have asked that question, uh, uh, can I have asked that question already, uh, uh, but like, and the range is raked after of, see, like, after every use and they go around with metal detectors as well? So, yeah, like, and they pick up everything that, so, yeah, so, yeah, like, all the ammo that, so, yeah, like, is on the ground, so, so, yeah, like, it doesn't, it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't exist there.
So, yeah, that, you're speaking about the shell casings.
Yes.
Um, the actual lead is going into some sort of embankment, I would assume, I've never seen, that's what I mean, the, the actual projectile which is going into an embankment to catch it? That lead is.
I.
I only know this because, like, I've been a member of four rotten yarn clubs since I was a child.
Yeah, no, a follow up.
Periodically, I'm not saying it's something that they need to do every, you know, year, but I know it can be costly, but there is also, you get money back through recycling the lead, so, just something to keep in mind. Um, school committee, I want to thank Selectman Hall for his comments, especially regarding accessibility. Um, I know in one of the last meeting, last Board of Selectmen meetings, another resident got up and voiced his concern for the costs that we're gonna incur. Um, I think that was one of the big reasons this community fought against B P, is that we need to address our schools, and we're already hearing murmurs from the community about how we can't afford to build an elementary school. But, um, one, I don't think the elementary school renovation and/or a new building is gonna cost anything near what the B P project is. Um, Somerset's going through a similar project, their cost is nowhere near the B P project. And also, our community is smaller than theirs, so I, I don't want to, I don't think we should start scaring the community with hypotheticals. Um, I do have a question for the town administrator. Um, M S B A, the feasibility study in there, two, like, typically you have two designs. If we are awarded to be entered into the, the program, the feasibility studies and plans, or the two options come at no cost to us, correct?
They, um, we will have to upfront the total cost of the feasibility study, uh, uh, like, and the M S B A will reimburse us a portion of that. Uh, uh, that portion will probably hovers around 50%.
Okay. Um, the reason why I just want to make that statement is, um, for some of us, we moved to this town because of the school district and some of the services that the school provide. And we quite frankly don't have any other options. I know, like, for myself, with my family situation, I couldn't send one of my children to a private school because their needs would never be met, so we're very reliant on, um, public schools and the services that they, they're able to provide to, specifically children with disabilities and I E Ps. Um, and then the last comment I just want to make is, um, with the C O D, I'm excited to see that the C O D, um, you know, is gonna continue to stay intact and be able to, um, do the work that it has been doing. I'm glad that, um, Selectman Mello is now a voting member, so I was very much in favor of making that move to keep the quorum anyway. Um, I'd just like the new members to be mindful that there's a lot more to be done, um, than just addressing the K M A report, it's a big part of it, but I think a big part of being a C O D member, like, for myself, when I was on it, was that you wanna, it's the one position where you can go kind of above and beyond just like the scope of what the A D A Coordinator or the Board of Selectmen or T A are able to do, and it's like, you want to be more of a champion of disability, or continue to be champions of individuals with disabilities and not just meeting the bare minimum to, you know, address the K M A report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Can I just make one comment?
Sure.
In regards to your comment, um, about making people concerned or scared about the schools, that is not at all what we're trying to do, we just want to have a realistic look at this, and so that nobody's like, I can't believe it's gonna cost all this money. Um, we just want people to be aware that this is gonna be costly, um, and we're aware of that, and we're taking the proper precautions against that. I mean, I know feasibility studies alone can be extremely costly. I haven't looked at towns our size, but I know for North Attleboro, their feasible study was very expensive, they're a much bigger, bigger community, but we just want people to be aware that this is coming and what it potentially means, and that we take it very seriously. I think that's important.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I, that wasn't directed, um, at the Board of Selectmen by any means, I, I obviously think, you know, I agree that the town has to remain transparent through the whole thing, because then we're not, I think B P is a little bit different because it, we're a part of that community, but we're not in that community, so we maybe didn't get all of the information. As that plan progressed with this, will be a little bit more of an intimate process. I just wanted to, as a, as a resident, because the comments I heard were from another town resident, I just wanted to, you know, voice my concerns as a parent with young children who still have to go through the system, that, you know, let's not be scared of something before we know what it look, before we have all that information, so thank you guys for keeping us in the loop.
We'll be scared after.
Yeah, after.
Mr. Carron?
Yes, sir.
Three things. One, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the use of lead bullets is no longer permitted. In regards to the potential for environmental hazards, um, I am sure we could reach out to conservation, um, for their input or assistance and a consultant, because I don't believe that's quite in their realm.
Yeah, yeah.
To look into Mr. Smith's concerns.
Yeah, no, I mean, I mean, it's, oh, yeah, the argument, yeah, the concern is valid, and, and, uh, like, we, oh, yeah, like, we need to know, like, and make, oh, like, and make sure how we're using that property is, oh, yeah, like, doesn't have any other implications or unintended issues that come along with it, for sure.
We don't always think of everything that could happen, and, Mr. Smith, thank you for your, your input, so this way, here, we can, uh, make sure that isn't going to be an issue.
Just quickly, with, we could comment about that, so, we are moving towards banning lead bullets, but there's only certain scenarios in which lead, lead ammunition is not allowed. Typically, it's near water, um, but there's still, the majority of ammunition is still, um, lead based. Um, I'm not exactly sure what the Police Department uses, the only, usually, you know, the only other thing is copper, which is extremely expensive, so typically, especially for practice scenarios, most individuals are not using those products, that's more like, you know, you're using copper or lead in hunting scenarios, I know it is banned when there is, when there's any type of, you know, water, um, within a certain distance, but other than that, lead bullets are still for sale and usable.
Right, Mr. Mullen, could you ask Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
To give us an update on whether or not his officers are using?
Yes.
Because it was my under.
Young communities that are involved as well.
Yeah, 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 the whole picture, yeah, like, I just actually asked him, so.
Thank you.
No problem.
Um, two other things, from you guys, Mr. Smith, and thank you, these are not negative. One of the things that I'd like to see, and it's been somewhat lacking on C O D, whether it be a library or town hall, or even public input or spotlight. We used to have, my first year on the board, we used to have a spotlight section for the different committees to come up and spotlight their program. Providing public education on the issue of disabilities, whether we speak about a specific disability, having a speaker come in, or a member of the committee speak, such as yourself, who has a very strong background in that area, or Mr. Gale to come up and speak about a specific aspect of what C O D is about, but also what services are out there for the public. You know, I'll give you an example. Many people who have electric wheelchair or are looking to purchase or maintain a wheelchair van, there aren't many providers in that, in this area for that. Just informing them of what providers are out there, or what the process is to acquire that would be huge. Um, it's certainly a help for those people who have individuals, family members that have a disability. So I, I would encourage that, and, and I'm hoping, as the chairman, that not just C O D, but other committees, again, would be given the opportunity.
Sure.
If they want to spotlight their program, and we also used to use it as a recruitment if they had vacancies.
Okay.
To get people to come on the board. You know, it'd be nice to have Ms. Powell come by some night and talk about what they do over there at prime time, or what the, uh. Aging does, so, I'd like to see that. And then the last thing regarding the feasibility study. One of the things. It wasn't just myself, it was Robert Rendon from FinCon. Kept in mind when I first got on the board was capital stabilization, and we came up with some rules, I wouldn't say rules, it was more of agreement, that we would try to set aside 10% of free cash for stabilization or capital stabilization. And I'm gonna advocate for that very shortly when we go down the budget process, because Mr. Rendon and I both saw the need for money in that account for two projects that are coming, the buyer's station and the school, whether it be remodeling, slash addition, or a brand new building, because we knew we were going to need money for those feasibility studies. And to go to a town meeting and ask, because they're costly. You know, I know in both instances. You know, I know in both instances, we have requested, and it's been allocated, $150,000. And then I was shocked to learn that 150 is only a drop in the bucket in to complete those feasibility studies. So with that knowledge, we were looking at capital stabilization as a way. And it's not something that we're looking at today, it's something that, two years ago, Mr. Rendon and I advocated for, and it's helped, and I think it will relieve those fears about the feasibility study. A building, on either case, addition or new, that's a whole different ballgame, that's gonna need a lot of heads coming together and figuring out how we're gonna pay for it, and not bury the taxpayers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else in the hall that'd like to be heard? Anybody out there that is online?
No. No audience online.
Okay, that's too bad. Uh, then it's adjournment time.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye, thank you, guys.
Thank you.